Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name's Deborah Monsiv. I'm the president of the Cottage Grove Genealogical Society, and I live at 775-00-SOUTH-6ST. So I'm out of town, but Cottage Grove has been my community my whole life. And I want to thank you for this opportunity to share what our society has been doing since my last visit. On behalf of the society, I want to thank you for your past and continued support of our mission. For those who do not know, we are an all-volunteer organization dedicated to help others discover more about their ancestors, local pioneers, and indigenous tribes by preserving records for research now and in the future. Our society reached an amazing milestone this year. On February 10th, we reached the 50th year of serving patrons in Southland County. I want to invite everyone here tonight to our 50th Anniversary Open House, which is Wednesday, in the Shepherd Room from 2:00 to 6:30, and I hope that you can join our celebration. You can tour the Ellis Memorial Research Library, pick up a free Getting Started packet, talk to nine experts who will be available to answer any research questions. There's door prize, a raffle, and anniversary cake. Everybody likes cake. The purpose of our society is to educate and promote family history and local history of the people who walked us land before us. For the last 50 years, we have collected hundreds of thousands of obituary and life event clippings, manuscript files, for anyone who lived in Southland County, and we are the repository for local family histories and genealogies. But our library holdings aren't just local. We have collections that include all 50 states and the regions around the world. This is what we accomplished in 2024 and what we're doing in 2025. We re-cataloged our vast collection and have almost finished adding the extensive collection of genealogical periodicals from around the world to our online catalog, which can be accessed on our website. Our digitization project continues as part of our long-term disaster preparedness goals. There are volunteer opportunities available to help with this project from your home. If you have internet, home computer, basic computer skills, you can do this work at your house. You can email the society to set up a demonstration and training if you're interested. We now have at least 10 or over 10,000 indexed obituaries and life events in our database, and we still have hundreds of thousands more to scan and index. The database is searchable on our website. We have several other volunteer opportunities that do not require computer skills, but if you like to laugh and have fun, please consider being part of our library volunteer team. A fairly new service we offered is returning lost items to family members. I wrote about one case in our July to December 2024 Trees from the Grove periodical that we publish twice a year. You have a copy of that story in the handout that Dana graciously handed out, and it was republished then in the Chronicle last March as part of the Partners in History series that was funded by a grant from the state Historic Preservation Office and the city of Cottage Grove. It was a case of serendipity. As some of you know, I've been collecting historic images of Cottage Grove for over 30 years. Some of the ones that I've collected have helped fay with some of the details of things that were at Bohemia Park in the historic past. And right after the 2024 freeze, a family from Olalla, Washington, made arrangements to spend two days researching their family in Cottage Grove. They were looking for information on the Beach family. We've all heard of the Beaches, Hubbard's and Baker's. After a long day researching just the Beach and Wallace families, because they discovered that the Wallace was a line they had here as well. And after a long day of searching, one of the ladies, one of the sisters asked me, well, they wondered, what happened to their grandmother's brother Ezra Baker? My heart kind of skipped a beat because I owned a card that was mailed on February 13th, February 1913, from Cottage Grove to an Ezra Baker in Portland. I've had that card for 30 years, and it's a fascinating card. It's more for what's written on it than it is for the image that's on the front. It started out five deaths in Cottage Grove this week, and this lady named Laura named them all. And so I asked the ladies what their grandmother's name was, and it was Laura. So I knew I had to gift them the card, but I didn't want to let go of it until I wrote a story about it. So that night, I made high-resolution color copies and promised to send them the card as soon as I had written the story. And so after writing the story, I sent them the story and invited them to either come back to Cottage Grove, or I would mail it to them, and they decided to come back to Cottage Grove. So their grandmother wrote that card 111 years earlier, and all of the family came to pick up the card. Even their brother, who lives in Michigan, flew to Cottage Grove, or flew to Portland and then come with them from Olalla, Washington. They picked him up at the airport. And it was a wonderful experience. You know, serendipity happens a lot in genealogy. And another notable case of a lost item that was returned to family was a World War I Veterans Memorial Flag. A couple purchased it at a Houston, Texas Goodwill, and they brought it home, and the case was in very poor shape, and so they took it apart to clean it and give it respect. And inside, folded in the flag, was a funeral card for Claude Davidson of Cottage Grove. So they called the Genealogical Society, and after doing a little research, we realized the memorial flag belonged to one of our past librarians who's now deceased. And another serendipitous thing is that I went to school with that librarian's son. He graduated in my class. And so we were able to facilitate getting the memorial flag returned to family. Just, you know, just a serendipitous thing that they see this memorial flag, and so this is another win-win. When the Sentinel moved their offices a few years ago into the mall by Safeways, I was contacted about a pallet, a full pallet of negatives and slides. And they said that if they couldn't find a home for someone that wanted them, they were going to go to the landfill. And so luckily, I was able to secure a temporary storage location. And then serendipitously, last week, I received a grant from a private supporter of local history, and his generous donation will pay for the equipment needed to digitize those negatives and slides. And we're estimating that there's 700,000-plus images in that pallet of slides and negatives. And then we recently received word that the Sentinel has agreed for our society to be the repository for their archives of the bound newspaper books on permanent loan. Several decades ago, they chose us to be the repository for their duplicate books. Not all years had duplicates, so we didn't have a full accompaniment of the newspapers. But we're grateful for their partnership, and now we will be the repository for all the surviving issues of all the local newspapers, not just the Sentinel. And we are in the process of coordinating the transfer, which I hope will be soon. Over the past two years, the Genealogical Society has secured two grants totaling $22,000 from the Woodard Family Foundation towards the Partners in History's goal to digitize our local newspapers as part of our preservation goal. And some might ask, why do we keep the originals if they're digitized? Without the original newspapers, the Knight Library, who is the Oregon's repository for historic newspapers, are the ones that do the digitization work, and they end up on the internet for free. If you just Google "University of Oregon Historic Newspaper Project," you can sit at home and read the Sentinel, the Bohemia Nugget, the Cottage Grove Leader, and find all kinds of great nuggets. If you want to learn how to search, let me know. But what happened with the first round of newspapers that they digitized with that 22,000 is they discovered that the microfilm is oxidizing. And when that happens, the images are compromised. And does everyone know what OCR means, Optical Character Recognition? It won't work when there's all these dots. And so then they're not word-searchable. And they found 90 issues in that first batch. And so it's really important that we hang on to the originals. When they microfilmed those 60 years ago, they use a process, and it's, they do a positive and a negative, and they've stored the negatives. And so they either have to re-digitize an original, or they have to take a positive, turn it into a negative, and then upload it for the OCR to work. So it costs more money. So plus that, when you, when things are microfilmed, if it has an actual photograph, they are almost black and unrecognizable. And so having the original newspapers there, if someone says, oh, my son was in this Boy Scout troop, do you have the original? We can pull the original newspaper, and they can get a digital image of their son or their grandfather. This is from 1930, so their grandfather in the Cottage Grove newspaper. So starting in January 2023, the Cottage Grove Genealogical Society teamed up with the downtown Cottage Grove to co-sponsor the history pubs that are on the second Tuesday of every month at the Axon Fiddle. It's been a huge success, and there hasn't been a night that it hasn't been standing room only. And anything up for '23 and '24 is on YouTube under the CG Genealogy YouTube channel. And then in 2025, the Partners in History are now the sole sponsors, and we invite you to attend the presentations. They're still on the second Tuesday at the Axon Fiddle. Come early to get a good seat. And this year, the Genealogical Society is scheduled for three of the 12 history pubs for 2025, and I put the presenters lineup in your packet. And the 2025 videos are on the Cottage Grove Partners in History YouTube channel. In 2024, our volunteers logged 2,397.25 hours of volunteer time. We had visitors from 13 states, one from Canada and one from Australia, albeit it was my sister, but she did visit the library. Our monthly meetings are held on the second Wednesday of every month at 10:00 AM in the Shepherd Room with a program following. If you are interested in family history or how to do historical research, please attend a meeting or visit our research library for a tour. Cottage Grove Genealogical Society is where discoveries happen, and I hope we see you Wednesday to help us celebrate our 50 years of service to our community.
Thank you. Items to be added to the agenda? I see none. Appearance of interested citizens. This is the time for citizen comment. The council will first take comments addressing items not listed on the agenda for a maximum of 30 minutes. The council will then take comments addressing action items on the agenda for a maximum of 30 minutes. Individual speakers must be recognized by the presiding officer, provide their name, identify whether they are city resident, and if so, their ward. Please limit comments to three minutes or less with council approval. Comments regarding any matter scheduled for public hearing may be provided only during that hearing. The council will not make any decisions based on public comment. However, staff and council may choose to ask questions or comment following the conclusion
Art Lancaster, Ward 2. I'm bringing up the hospital again. It's terrible. It's dry, it's four feet high, and it will burn. It needs to be cleaned up. There's a whole mountain side of dry grass that if it goes, all those brand-new, beautiful homes are going to go too. It needs to be cleaned up. I know Mr. Sarrowine has done what he can. He's called the owner, but nothing's been done. It's going to have to come, it's got to be beyond the owner, because he's not going to do anything. He's going to let it burn, and I'd hate to see that happen. It's terrible. But that's it on that. Now, I've heard a lot of talk about raising taxes. The people in this community can't afford any more taxes. Back when there was jobs here, yeah, there was a good tax base. We had mills surrounding this city. Those mills are gone. Those were high-paying, well-tax jobs, but they're gone. Unless you bring good jobs back to this locale, you're going to have to live within your means, period. We can't afford it. You've got people working three jobs right now just to be able to rent a home. That's crazy. You know, you've got young families that are moving out because they can't afford to live here. Come on, give them a break. Think about it anyway. You know, I love this town. I moved to this town because I was tired of getting robbed in Eugene and Springfield. But it's not the town I moved to. It is not. I understand things get expensive, but don't make us pay for it all the time. I'm disabled. I'm limited on my income, and there's a lot of us out there that are just living day by day. To raise your taxes like you're somebody is wanting to, you're going to cause this town irrepital damage. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Fleck.
Good evening, Council. Mike Fleck, 923 South U Street, Cottage Grove. I'm here to talk about Item 9C, which is the draft nuisance ordinance before you tonight. I want to share some concerns I have with that ordinance as it is and/or questions about how it would be implemented. How will you apply Section 8.12.290, Section A, in determining whether a business owner is acting in good faith or not? What if the business owner disagrees? What are they, what if they are asked to hold somebody accountable for behaviors on their property, but their funders will not allow? That, of course, affects us. What is the appeal process? Is the only remedy the courts? Second item, the nuisance code drafts states that problems within 300 feet of a business property are also covered. How can a business be held responsible for activities that are not on their property and that likely are without their knowledge? If the reason is because their business was a draw, then we should also hold grocery stores responsible for the activities near them? I ask because in the Freedom of Information request I made earlier this year, they were some of the locations with the highest number of arrests and violations. Are those businesses also being assessed under Section 8.12.290, Section A? I would argue that if they are not being assessed and they have more arrests or violations, that is, that shows a clear bias in the process. Next item, how can you hold a business responsible for activities on a neighboring property within 300 feet that has an absent owner who is not managing the property? The police chief at the February 24th meeting stated that there were problems near our property on the night or nights we operated a warming shelter. I understand he was referring to the old hospital, thank you, which is not being maintained or managed by the new owner who lives out of state. Please go look at the property where the grass is four feet tall, which shows their neglect. I would argue that that property owner is responsible for securing and maintaining their property, not their neighboring business. It is clear, next item is clear, despite comments from the March 24th meeting, this ordinance was drafted to impede our ability to offer programs on our property, which are allowed under the zoning code and which we have offered for over 18 years at this location. Our agency is committed to being a good neighbor and holding people accountable for bad behaviors. We welcome feedback from our neighbors and the city, but we cannot and will not be treated unfairly or be held responsible for actions we have not given consent for or have knowledge of. Thank you.
Thank you. Ward 1. I'm wanting here to discuss the nuisance thing, too. I'm very much in favor of it. I live right there, not far from Mike Fleck's place of business, and we're hampered almost daily by the homeless going from there up to Mount David, back and forth. Our mailbox are constantly down there, sticking their fingers in the slots on the mailboxes. I mean, I would love to see something done there. And the city did go and try to mow the lot across the street from me. They did a very poor job on that. The hospital itself is still a disaster. I mean, it needs something, and that's about it.
Item A, public hearing on proposed uses of state shared revenues. City manager, Mr. Sarrowine.
Good evening, Your Honor, members of the council. This is the next step in the state-mandated budget process. State law requires the cities to hold two public hearings on proposed use of state shared revenues, one before the Budget Committee, which we did back on May 13th, and then one before the City Council. So this is an opportunity for citizens to give us their opinion on how the city should share that state, use that state shared revenue.
2025-26 budget hearing, City Manager, Mr. Sarrowine.
We need to open the public hearing.
I'll now open the public hearing at 7:30 PM. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of taking comments on the 2025-26 budget.
We need to do the state shared revenue first. Thank you.
Two public hearings. I'll now open the public hearing at 7:30. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of taking comments on the proposed use of state shared revenues. May I please have the staff report? We will now take public testimony. For all persons testifying, please state your name and address for the record.
Johanna Z.
Shared revenue or budget?
This is budget. Oh, shared revenue. Are there any questions for the council? I now close the public hearing at 7:31 PM. 2025-26 budget hearing, City Manager, Mike Sarrowine.
Well, good evening again, Your Honor, and members of the council. The City of Cottage Grove Budget Committee has met and approved the 2025-2026 budget. This public hearing is a requirement of Oregon-refined statutes and must be held prior to the City Council adopting the budget resolution.
I will now open the public hearing at 7:32 PM. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of taking comments on the 2025-26 budget. Public testimony. Will now take public testimony for all persons testifying. Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Councilor Johanna Z, Ward 4. So thank you for offering the town hall. I trust that it will evolve into a genuine back-and-forth conversation, I think, as it was intended. I think it was a really good start. Regarding the budget process, I think it was a really great experience for me. It provided insight into how the system works. It was a small window into that. We can't, however, scrutinize, as individuals, scrutinize every line item in the budget as it truly takes immersing oneself into each department to understand the needs of that department, for both the people working in it and how to best be in service to the community. The committee, though, I feel, offers checks and balances. Each department head does their job in asking for what they feel would support their department. In this, they are truly doing their job, and there is no judgment in that ask. We can, however, realize that the system that has existed for decades is not supportive of a thriving community. The people working within the system, though generally good intentioned, see through a lens with which they were taught to see through. There are other ways. This was partly accomplished with the second motion that was made to direct the city manager to reduce the gap in the general fund. We were given a budget to approve with no other real options, one budget, one choice, save for the discussion on the utility bill that we had, which was helpful. And there wasn't much contemplation on the general fund beyond explanations from the department heads. I would have liked to have had a conversation after those explanations and questions were answered with only the council and other city budget members at the table. When we step outside that narrow box with our common goals as citizens of the community, the creativity can flow. If no, it no longer becomes a matter of simply approving or not approving. In fact, I feel it's our duty to question this process so that we can continue to grow and improve. Do we, as a community, want to stay in debt, paying off interests from bonds forever? How much do we need for backup funds? Are there different and innovative ways to accomplish the same goals? These answers will only come from outside that box. Just because someone in authority tells us that something is a certain way does not mean that there are not other perspectives. I have heard many great ideas over the past couple of weeks that I hadn't heard before, so I thought that was really helpful, and I trust that this momentum will continue. Gone are the days of $10,000 toilets. We don't have to feel disempowered. In reality, we have an incredible, unique opportunity here to create something from the ground up. So I just wanted to thank you all for the opportunity to serve on the Budget Committee. I am pleased with the outcome and the direction we're headed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from council? I'll now close the public hearing at 7:35 PM. Consent agenda? Council servant?
The council approved the consent agenda as presented.
Do we have a second?
Certainly.
We have a motion with a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Resolutions and ordinances? I see none. Business from the City Council. Cancellation of July 28, 2025 City Council meeting. Cancellation of July twenty eighth, two thousand twenty five City Council meeting. Mr. Sarawine.
Good evening, Your Honor, members of the council. The symphony is going to be in town that evening, and since council members have expressed interest to attend, staff is recommending that we counsel, that cancel that council meeting.
Do you need a vote or a consensus?
We need a motion.
Okay.
Here, the move that the City Council cancel the council meeting on July twenty eighth, two thousand twenty five.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion with the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Item B, auditing auditing and financial consulting services agreement. City Manager, Mr. Sarawine.
Well, good evening, Your Honor. You know, I've noticed something, that when it gets so hot that nobody gets a decent night's sleep, we all get tongue tied. Yeah, me included. We have before you this evening the Financial Consulting Services Agreement with Isler CPA to provide us with audit services. To their credit, they have already started their work on the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty three audit. Our consultant, Summer Sears, has been working with them. They are scheduled to be here on site, but as a matter of timing issue, we need to get a contract in place with them. And so staff would recommend that you approve the agreement as presented.
Councilor Irvin?
Mayor, move that council approve the Personnel Service Agreement with Isler CPA for auditing and financial consulting services. I'll press the City Manager to sign the agreement.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion with the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Concerns from council? Oh, did I? Oh, sorry. Discussion of draft chronic nuisance code. Mr. Sarawine.
Well, good evening, Your Honor, members of the council. I'm going to turn this over to our city attorney.
So behind the scenes, there's been some work on the draft ordinance before you in an effort to try to address what we've heard from council directions so far. I just want to emphasize it's a work in progress. There's been back and forth between staff and my office and the municipal judge, and we have not finalized those elements, but those all have to do with filing the complaint and how it will be brought in municipal court. So it isn't an issue that really is going to concern the council or change what I think is a productive conversation this evening for you all, which is the to focus on the definition of chronic nuisance property and the types of offenses that could constitute one of the three offenses within this time period currently defined as ninety days. And you did hear some testimony this evening about the three hundred feet of a property. I just want to throw in there that it also talks about three or more separate factual incidents of the list. This appears, let's just be really clear, eight point one, two point two seven oh in the definition section. And chronic nuisance property appears like a third of the way down on page two, and it's the subsections one, A through F, I think you might want to take a look at. And then the description of the real property that could be cited as a chronic nuisance property described in that sub one of the definition for chronic nuisance property. That's really, I think, what you heard this evening in terms of public comment and concerns. It also segues nicely with exactly where I wanted you to focus this evening to hear. In reflecting the Dal's ordinance that we looked at on May twenty eighth, I think that was the date, the three hundred feet is the same. The Dal's had a twelve month period instead of this ninety day period, which really tightens it up per council's direction, prior direction at a public meeting. And the three or more separate factual incidents, that's same as the Dal's ordinance. We didn't change anything except that, the ninety day period. But you all should talk and maybe hear from staff about is, are we heading in the right direction? Are these the kinds of nuisance activities that are to be targeted by this ordinance? I also want to point out that in every other city where I've seen this adopted and they've had it on their books for decades, it is an option of last resort. It almost never is used. It is just another tool in the tool belt of staff, and to meet this criteria is not easy. It it isn't. Very few properties are ever going to qualify as a nuisance property, a chronic nuisance property. And even if they qualify, there are so many outs along the way for voluntary compliance that a complaint is almost never filed. So I just want to give that, provide that as some context. Even if you move forward, don't feel like it isn't a silver bullet for any particular problem you might be perceiving, and it is certainly not any kind of, you know, targeted ordinance or code provision from my perspective. I I do want to just, another than point is, well, I guess the version that you have isn't highlighted, so let me just point out to you the sections where there is an out for voluntary compliance and working with a property owner. Eight point one, two point two nine oh, A. The second portion of that first paragraph talks about in deciding whether to proceed, the enforcement officer shall consider whether the owner has reported the incident and otherwise acted responsibly. So you wouldn't proceed if you're getting some cooperation or at least acknowledgement, yes, there's a problem. Similarly, at the end of that same section, point two nine oh, the very last paragraph says nothing in this section shall limit the power of the city at any time to enter into an agreement with the owner of the real property for voluntary abatement. And then there's even a third provision that under the abatement proceedings in eight point one, two point three hundred, B, even after a complaint has filed, it says if prior to the trial, the owner and city enter into an agreement, the court action is going to be stayed. It will, it will be put on pause essentially to see how these voluntary compliance measures, how effective they are, can they be implemented? That's always staff, your staff's preference. It's, it's always my advice. Try to work it out. You don't want to go to court. So I think those are the two areas responding to the council direction that I recall hearing. And I, and let's see if I had anything else I wanted to point out. Oh, just finally, to the extent that there was the public comment, if any of that could be submitted in writing, I didn't catch all of the questions, and I would like to work to try to address those to the council the next time this comes around for council consideration.
Any questions? A comment? Counselor Hink?
I have a question about the ninety day period. So you said the Dal's has one year?
Mm-hmm.
So does that mean after, ninety days after the first offense, reported offense, it goes away?
Yes. The timeline would start again. So if there were three incidents within a ninety day period, so essentially one per month, you know, or more frequently, that would provide a basis for a chronic nuisance action. But if it was after ninety days, then no, the clock starts again.
I would prefer one year.
The Dal's has one year?
Mm-hmm.
And you're proposing ninety days?
Uh, I recall hearing a preference for the ninety days. So I I modified it. That also reflects the other ordinances that I've worked on for other entities. So a year is a really long time.
So the Dal's is an outlier.
I think the Dal's is just an older version, and the more recent versions have tried to tighten up that, the focus. But it is a policy choice.
Counselor Meriday?
Thank you, Mayor. We directed the attorney as a counsel to to shorten the gap because if we have to wait a whole year for that to invoke the ordinance, that would kind of defeat addressing an issue where there, if we have a chronic problem, we have multiple incidents, we can, if we, it happens within ninety days, we can take action using this ordinance. So it was, we did request that to give more.
Is that how it reads?
Expidient.
It certainly was requested, but I do want to say that if you had a one-year time period, if there were three events within ninety days, you could start an action. You don't have to wait till the end of the time period before moving forward. It, that, the the one year broadens the set of properties that might fall within this ordinance's reach.
Counselor Irvin?
Is it safe to understand that ninety days as written as statute limitations? Like?
No, no. So that, this, the ninety days gives rise to a claim. Whether or not the city chooses to move forward on any property that now is a chronic nuisance property as defined here, you would still be able to go through the process and and work out a, a, a compliance plan, file the complaint. There's no real timeline for filing the complaint. I I think the prosecutor or the filing attorney at the time would, uh, there, I mean, there may be a statute of limitations. It isn't set in here, and it's probably governed by a different law.
So this is just the window of time for that?
That's right. Yep. Yep.
Well, I view this, I I'm definitely in support and view this as a good neighbor ordinance, and the fact that it's been on the books for decades in other cities speaks volumes to me. And I am concerned was something that Mr. Fleck said, that the funders will not allow, and I'm not sure exactly what that means. But I, I think that these city codes are something that allows us to enforce accountability. And I would say it's for every single business and private homeowner needs to be held accountable for the actions of people coming to visit, and if it's a for services or just frequenting their home. And so I'm, think that I would love for you to see the questions that that he has and bring that back to council. Counselor Sotomayor?
Maybe you responded to this specifically, but like, I know also people were interested in, does this deal with derelict properties where, you know, maybe we're not citing people, but you can see things ready to burn, things falling down? Is, is there a way to proceed with this kind of thing if people aren't involved with it?
So I, I'm just going to say no. You really need to have made, you had, you had to try to enforce any of these areas, any of these violations. You couldn't just in your head go, oh, I've passed that house five times in the last month. And I think that it is, you know, that they are creating unreasonable noise and then tell staff, we want to move forward. So it would need, staff would have needed to take some kind of affirmative action to like check the box to say that's one of three.
But abandoned properties, not, I'm not talking about someone living in there that you don't like how their yard looks, but there's an abandoned property that someone somewhere owns, and it just sits there and falls down and provides a nuisance somehow, like, like it's going to burn down and the city, is that when the city goes and mows the lawn and then puts a lien against somebody? Is, is that, is that in here where?
That would be a one instance. That's a nuisance abatement action. So you have a nuisance ordinance that allows you to abate what qualifies as a nuisance on private property, whether they're there or not, and lien the property in that amount. So that would be count one. If there's two more within the timeframe that you set, then you might have a chronic nuisance property. And so it doesn't matter if the property owner is, you know, across the country. It doesn't matter if they're non-responsive as long as, so actually, the to qualify, let's look under sub two, chronic nuisance property, sub two, says to qualify, all nuisance activities must be based on either personal observation of a city enforcement officer or a determination by the enforcement officer, either after investigation or following a sworn statement of a person who personally witnessed the alleged incident and a determination there are reasonable grounds to conclude the alleged nuisance activities did in fact occur. So if that happens three times within the window, you may move forward. And I, from the look on your face, it doesn't look like I'm answering your question, but but it sounded like you were concerned about who's responsible, and that's less of a concern here than the property itself causing problems in the community.
I just had a very good example given to me after we did this last time of where there are properties in the city that sit year after year, and there isn't any way to do anything about them. And like, we've heard about this hospital, you know, over and over. I just don't, unless there's somebody inside doing illegal things, chances are this won't deal with something unless. I, I mean, that's just what I, what I'm, so it would be a separate kind of action that would maybe allow something to happen?
No. So if, if any, if any of the activities under one, A through F right now, F is squatting by individuals without authority or right to be on the property or other unlawful occupation or camping, if there's three incidences of that, in the way that I just described what constitutes reasonable grounds, that could be a chronic nuisance property. And what would happen is there is always an owner, whether it's sitting in trust, whether it's being foreclosed upon by a bank, there are owners under the definition of owner in this proposed ordinance. But what you would be able to do is that if you have a non-responsive owner, you can close the property. The court takes action and authorizes staff, go ahead and board it up. You have that authority. It's, it is a strong and thus not very regularly used exercise. It is a constraint on private property rights. We don't do that lightly. But I, I, so I just, I I want to answer you in the affirmative, it absolutely would address the situation that you're describing. Yeah.
Counselor Meriday?
Thank you, Mayor. To the staff, don't, we currently have a tall weeds ordinance that could be invoked already for that particular case.
Mr. Stewart?
It may, we may have moved it up on, where it started in May. In general, our staff will go out when we have time, those properties or the other mechanisms. And the process is, the folks that are sitting in the audiences is that in the case of the hospital, it was brought to our attention, our key city planner, Mel Doppa, first step in the compliance process, which is a voluntary request for them to abate the nuisance. They have a certain period of time, I don't have the numbers, but it's in a code. If they don't take action during that period of time, then we send a second letter, and it's setting this down and explains that they'll be fine. Once we meet the, have enough information, then we can go with the judge, let's, in to give the award. And to give the order. Over property or work. And if we receive payment, then the council will be asked to replace it. It's not something that happens overnight. Fortunately, it's a process we have to go through that we need to follow our codes. If we mess up in that process, we don't follow the steps, there's a good chance that the judge say, say you didn't follow the process, therefore start with all of it. So we have that. The other item that we have, that we've used in the past that we worked with our building official was to create a derelict and dangerous building code. We've used that before in the city to address the situation where we had individuals living in. That was dangerous. We had to go through the process. We worked with the owners at the time to go in and board up. So this code could be beneficial to instances we have like, right now, we have a situation, at least one, I think there's multiple, but one that I'm aware of, there's a house that the owner passed away. So the property's in limbo land, going to the state or whoever has ownership. Well, there's an individual living in the property. And we don't have any ability to get something like this, say, hey, they're camping illegally or they're occupying illegally. They've had solid race issues multiple times. Our planners had to go and issue them requests for solid ways. That's a piece of property that this would have been really good into being able to use the criteria and be able to actually effectively move forward with resolving the neighbors that live next to this house. It's very, some very negative.
Counsel Wilson.
Okay. Understanding there's processes and time, you know, letters have to go out, wait for response, there's periods of time that it takes. Is the 90-day window long enough for the processes to happen for three complaints? If they're required to have all this communication with, say, an out-of-state owner? So that the three complaints actually happen within the 90 days and the process to have them attempt to abate voluntarily? Is there, is it going to run past the 90 days so they never get three instances?
I'm not sure if you were doing only three nuisance abatement procedures and got all the way through abatement three times. Probably you wouldn't have three of those fit within 90 days. But what constitutes a chronic nuisance property is ordinance or code violations, squatting, unreasonable noise, arrests, any activity on the property that constitutes a misdemeanor or felony and possession, manufacture, or delivery of a controlled substance. So if you have a combination of those and citations are issued or observations are witnessed by a code enforcement officer or affidavits are submitted, then I don't, I don't think it would be diff, I mean, the idea is that it would not be easy. You don't want it to be an easy threshold to meet, but it is certainly not impossible.
That was, if it's a single type of instance that keeps happening at a particular property, but it's strictly an abatement type of thing, it could go on forever.
True. Right.
Counsel Hank.
Now that we cleared up the 90-day thing. One of the reasons I like a year is because it allows people longer period, a longer opportunity to be on good behavior. You know, if something is falling off after 90 days, you know, people learn the system, they learn how to use the system and kind of work it. And I feel like being able to hold people accountable longer, be able to, if someone is being a repeat offender, it's just longer that someone has to be on good behavior. I don't know if that makes sense, but just.
Counsel Irvin.
I haven't had a chance to read O R S four seven five, but my, my thoughts are surrounding the difference between federal law and certain substances fairly prolific here. And they're the subject of some complaints I've received recently with odors. So I could see probably some folks be interested in complaining about marijuana odors coming into their house. And I wonder how that falls into place here? Are we talking about if it violates federal law, but not necessarily state law? How, how do these play out? With the language just written?
Yes.
And I guess that's also for, in the future, if we have other ordinances or code violations that come up afterward, this would opt in the future. Nuisance ordinances and its violations.
Yes, yes. The nuisance activity that is listed in your nuisance ordinance could qualify as one ordinance violation under this ordinance. Smell of a substance that is legal, unless it rises to the level of an actual nuisance under your other nuisance ordinance, I would never recommend moving forward on that basis. It would be your code enforcement officer's choice, but it, that would be a very tough action to defend.
Counsel Hank.
Speaking of that, so if there is, say, a business that is in the center of town that emits a very strong odor as you're driving past the beautiful parks and whatnot on your way to Main Street downtown, there is nothing that can be done. We have nothing in our toolkit to hold people accountable because that does affect people's quality of life. And if I were a future investor in Cottage Grove and I'm driving into town and that's the first thing I get before I get on the Main Street, that could affect future revenue. So do we not have something in our toolkit to address things like that?
So I'm gonna, I'm going to defer to staff, but my, my first take is, is that all that's the problem? Is it only an odor and is it actually legal? So if it crosses the threshold to constitute a nuisance under your nuisance abatement ordinance, then again, you would have a basis to move forward on this or you could move forward with a nuisance abatement action. But if not, no.
Mr. Stewart.
I would share that when the council implemented the code governing the management that substance, there could have been some decision points that might have been able to relieve that, like mandating air purifiers, various different things. Unfortunately, the council chose not to add those type of criteria at the time. And so it'd be very difficult. Yes, it's a strong odor and it does, people tend to smell it. But for the council, in my understanding, and that's correct, but you could consider changing some code for anything new that applies, but it can't be no to active and put back. So that's something that council could consider in the future is that if we're going to have more of these in our community, you could put some parameters around it that are reasonable and indoor grows with scrubbing devices to control the odor is reasonable.
Counsel Hank.
I would like that. I'd like to look at that someday. I mean, we can't control the sins of our fathers, but we can think about things going forward.
Could make a motion, right?
Just a consensus direction to staff.
Consensus direction to staff, I would be in favor of that as well.
Counsel.
Still not clear on my read. Point A, possession, manufacture, delivery of controlled substance related offenses. There's a big difference between what is federally illegal, what is legal here in the state. So does federal not have jurisdiction?
Not in this.
Not in this ordinance.
Right.
So it's only appeals up to state.
Correct.
Anyone else? Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel Irvin, I would just add to your point when it comes to the, the strong odors and, and things. And we're talking about licensed commercial operations. But if that's something that somebody calls into us and they're experiencing that same thing with the house right next door to them, that's not a licensed commercial facility, that would definitely be something that would, we would be interested in. So with recreational marijuana, the, the allowable number of plants, regardless of the number of people in the residence is only four. So it would probably take a lot more than four plants to put off that level of odor. So that would, you know, I mean, obviously it doesn't give us probable cause, but certainly would give us something that, that we would definitely be interested in, in exploring further. So, and then of course, if you're dealing with, you know, sales of controlled substances, methamphetamine, heroin, things like that, those are all things that obviously we're going to be keeping track of as well. So if that becomes an issue, you know, with a certain property and it's a rental property, I think that's where this would, would come into play as well. So, does that, does that help?
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I'd just like to clarify my part of the support for the, looking into the nuisance ordinance effectiveness as it relates to the commercial. I would like to see an extent to what do we do, but it's neighbor to neighbor as well, is there, I'm not sure what our, how far nuisance ordinance can be interpreted, where it is, if it needs to be addressed to, to address that issue. So if it is, I don't have any recommendations on it in particular right now, but just like to see what, what is in place.
Sure. Counsel Hank.
Couple of things, thank you for the clarification. I'll remember that during next grow season in my neighborhood. But with the, you know, the odor, you know, especially in residential, I don't want it to get to a thing where it's neighbors against neighbors. You're, if I'm staining my deck or someone's painting their house, that is a temporary, non-lingering, you know, odor. It's, you know, but things that are persistent, egregious negligence and do impact someone's quality of life.
Anyone else? All right. We'll move on. Concerns from counsel?
Oh, I'm so sorry. So did I hear any kind of consensus around the 90 days versus a year? I, I heard one counselor clearly on that point. I heard other questions around that. Beyond that, I haven't heard, so I'd like some direction from consensus of counsel on that one point. And then I didn't hear any other requested changes. I just want to confirm that.
Counsel Irvin.
I would, I'd like to see it expand more just one season. So if it's 90 days or a year, I'd be on the year side of things.
It, it could be six months, it could be four months. It could be any, any number that you agree to direct me.
I would be supportive of the year.
Counsel Sotomayor.
The idea that this is a forever thing, I think it's nice that we maybe whatever number we come up with, can we put something on our radar to revisit and evaluate it at the end of a certain amount of time?
Code can always be reevaluated. Staff can definitely have reminders to come back. I would never insert that into the code, however. Counsel shall review this on an annual basis, but administratively, that can be done.
I really don't have a feel for it now, but once again, whatever we come up with, if we kind of say that, because it sounds like maybe it makes a difference, but.
I, I would just assert that nothing is forever and we can always revisit. And we have not had a problem thus far. And it's just to protect the city. And we can always revisit it if we think something is unfair.
So can it be flagged for a year after just the yay, this is a year old?
We can revisit.
Thank you. I feel good then.
Counsel Wilson.
I'm not comfortable with the year. I think that in our previous discussions, we wanted a little more tightening down. And in speaking with counsel that there was some old regulation like the DOWS that had the year and others that were more tightened, tightened. I would be, it doesn't necessarily have to be a 90-day thing for me. But I think in order to accomplish the potential of an, an abatement type of situation where we have to have communication and potential, you know, ignoring the abatement, but there's a process. Maybe if we set it at six months, that would be enough time, window of time, that if it was three instances within the six months, that would be allow enough time of of communication that would.
Counsel Irvin.
Counsel Wilson, I'm hearing because I understand the concern of how long it takes to get through the process to notice and all that. But as I'm understanding it, the 90 days, six months, year, whatever it is, is the window of time in which the negative incidents occur or are looked at. It has nothing to do with how long it takes to get in contact, to notice. And I understand that if at any point there's compliance from the property owner, no action's going to be taken anyway. So it's just a, yeah.
Yeah. The, the concern that was, if we have a particular thing, it's, it's an abatement situation. And it takes 45 days in order to get a response. I don't know what the timeframe is for communication. You know, send a letter, wait for the response, send a second letter, go to the judge. Okay, now we can address the issue. If there's been no other complaints other than that particular situation, does it count as three if you have three citizens that come in and, and make the same complaint? Or is it? If that's the only situation, there's no break-ins, there's no other criminal activity, it's just.
Right, right. As we were talking about, if that's, if you're trying to string together three court determined tall grass violations, then you would have your nuisance abatement timeline. You would have, potentially they would request to come to the council. You know, it can take a while before those get to the judge. That, so I, I, it is, if there were other kinds of offenses also folding on top of those kinds of longer nuisance abatement violation proceedings, the 90 days is not a problem. If it's only those three, first off, you probably wouldn't want to call them a chronic nuisance property. If, if it can't, because those kinds of nuisance abatement issues happen to regular residences. And, and so I, I think it's, it's another point in favor of a 90-day time period so that kind of less significant issues, less significant abatement proceedings, not coupled with anything else, wouldn't fall within the purview of this ordinance. I, I'm really curious to know what staff thinks about the timelines.
Counsel Stewart.
When I explain the process for tall grasses. In this situation here, if you look at the chronic nuisance items that would be addressed, probably most of the citations issues, at least part of those making the issue. You could maybe see that we experienced. You could maybe see in a week's period, I've issued a citation for possession of a substance. And then maybe they issued the ticket for noise violation. That's a little different process than what you see these violations in the common at a point. I don't think it has anything to do with our process of what we have to go through to tall grass or we have someone wasting money.
Do you have an opinion about 90 versus any longer period of time? Do you think 90 is sufficient for to to for staff to use this as the tool as intended? Or do you think a longer period of time is helpful?
Three violations in a full period. Potentially justifying this, eat somebody, say that a couple violations to keep them off, short the window of two hundred days and it's a quick thing. And that's all you did is do days, seven or even more. It just, it sounds to me like you're here and you want a longer period of traffic influence, positive behavior to it was too short.
I absolutely agree with that.
I would just echo what Councilmember Hake said. You know, sometimes I have a pessimistic view of human nature. But I think your point is very well taken. Also wanted to address the comment from Councilmember Stellmeyer. What I would suggest is that, you know, we're going to be doing reports from departments every six months and that we do a six month report from our community development department, include some sort of a nuisance abatement report included in it. So you would get information as to, well, do we have three instances in the last six months or do we have five instances last six months? And then council can say, we need to amend the ordinance, the ordinance is working just fine. And that would be your opportunity to discuss it. But to answer the city attorney's question directly, like I said, I sometimes have a bit negative view of human behavior. I think a longer a period than 90 days might be in order.
I would agree. I support the 12 months. And I would just say that this is not a targeting of any business. And as Mr. Fleck testified in front of us not too long ago, that there hasn't been any problems. And so if there's not been any problems, then there is nothing to oppose with us protecting our city with a good neighbor ordinance. So Counselor Meriday?
Thank you, Mayor. I I believe the original intent that we wanted was something that we could use quickly. And I thought the shorter time window gave us more flexibility to do that. But I just heard your explanation tonight that if three incidents happened within the first month of a year period, that you could invoke this ordinance. So that's, that was, I think, the intent of wanting a very short window. We don't have to wait an extended period before we could use this. If they had multiple infractions, then that would trigger the the consequences. Is that my reading?
You're correct.
Okay.
Counsel Hank?
And I would hope that being good humans, that if someone has, does something bad on day one, and then does something bad halfway through, and then there's something bad at day 364, we're not automatically going to the extreme.
Yes, this is just a tool to make it a good life experience for everyone in Cottage Grove. It's it's not to impose any. Go ahead, Counsel Wilson.
I appreciate the input and I've been convinced. I mean.
I would just echo what the mayor said that, you know, and also what the city attorney said, that, you know, cities that have these sort of ordinances in place, they're not used often, but there are situations where they need to be used. So it truly is another tool in our toolbox to be able to address, you know, what's called the really bad actors, because those things do happen.
So do we have a consensus on a year? Okay, yes. All right. Concerns of council? Counselor Wilson?
Okay, I did have an opportunity to attend school board meeting. And they've adopted their budget considerably larger than ours. In case anybody's interested, it's 60, over 69 million for the school board budget. There the concern that 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 I have, there was a recent election. There are two of the races are razor thin tight as to who's going to hold the seat on the school board. There was an extremely low turnout for voters. So it's just an ongoing concern with the voting situation that people complain a lot but don't vote. And it's 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 unfortunate on that. The other thing was I recently had an opportunity just the other day, actually, to participate. And I was talking to Counsel Meriday about this. OSU is doing a study on tourism in this town and the effects and and thoughts amongst the citizenry. And I'm not sure how broad they're reaching out to the to the citizens of this town. So if you you happen to see a survey about it, it's going to be happening over, I believe, a five year period that they're going to be talking about to the citizenry about the impact of tourism in Cottage Grove and ideas that we have as citizens. It wasn't just directed to me as a counselor, it was directed to me as a citizen. So if you get an opportunity to participate in that, I encourage you to do so. It was a well put together survey with great opportunity to actually input into it ideas.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counsel Meriday?
And thank you. And I did ask Counselor Wilson if he finds the link to, maybe he could send it to the recorder so that it could be distributed amongst us and publicized outwardly. As you heard from the Genealogies Society, the History Pub is every second Tuesday. And this tomorrow, you'll hear yours truly holding forth on the Oregon Country Fair and the actual impact that it's had on Cottage Grove, which is not insignificant.
Counselor Sotomayor?
So I remembered to notice something. If you happen to be at our town hall, I said this then, but now it's the day after tomorrow. So if you are able to go to the concert in the park on Wednesday, come early. The high school, well Cottage Grove High School and Al Kennedy High School, both are going to set up little tables and explain what they do in their career technical education programs. I ran into a couple of the people at the high school and they seem pretty excited about what they can share. So I hope that's something that is is encouraged and people get out and ask them some good questions and let them show off a little. And then I've got a couple other things if you want me to. Okay. First of all, I think it would maybe simplify how far I should go on the next one. If I got a sense from the council, are we interested in doing more town hall meetings?
I have a few issues with them because I worry about staff time. Because our staff is overworked as is, and I'm concerned about that. And so my thought is to do as I said earlier, where we split council and take turns. And so that the and take our own notes so that we don't make our staff dedicate more time to it. That would be my concern. I I think being with the people is great, but I think making staff work that's already working 50, 60 hours a week is a stretch. So that's my concern. Counsel Hank?
I had the same thoughts and spoke to a few people after that even made reference to that, that they would prefer it be more of a conversation, which means no more than three. And that's where that's where I am, just talking to people afterwards.
Not as many open meeting rules?
Yes.
I think I'd like to hear from a couple others, if if anybody else has anything. But I do have some responses to what I've heard so far.
Yeah. In talking to some people after the the last town hall meeting, the sense that I got was that they would rather we come to them more on a some of the groups that meet within the community and different neighborhood, like Middlefield's neighborhood meeting that they do. There's other different groups that meet and they would love to have two to three council members show up there and and just have conversation with them. As as that format would be easier for them to express their ideas. The format that we had, great experiment, didn't really work for a flow of ideas. It was kind of a single subject and not a not more of a free flow of of concerns amongst the the public in in at large.
I would also like to acknowledge that we didn't have a lot of new faces. It was a lot of the same faces that are always here. And we're trying to reach new faces and get their opinions. And so that's where I agree with you, Counsel Wilson, is going to where they are. I think we'd probably make more progress.
Counsel Meriday?
Yeah, I would like to acknowledge that the subcommittee did try to avoid having the staff do extra work that we that we thought more, the more that we could do to make an organic process and less way on the staff would be better. And that's when we ran into the meeting requirements that we're we're working through and finding a way, I believe, to overcome the limitations of noticing and making sure that the records and the the accessible access to attend virtually. I think we can work all that out and still not have much staff time involved. And so then we would have, if a group from, say, Middlefield wanted to hear from the entire council, we could go there using our simplified format and be there en masse if that was their wish. And if only, they only want two or three, then we have the mechanism to do that as well.
And we and we can move with three with no problem. And if we can arrange something like that, I wouldn't be opposed to it. But it's, I've been part of an ethics violation and don't want to repeat that. So that would be my concern.
If it's the idea of whether it can be ethical or not, I spent a pretty significant amount of time checking on this. And the thing that kind of was shared with me at the beginning of the response from the person, oh, if you want to know their name, from the ethics group, okay. The intent of the open meeting laws, this is the ultimate open meeting. We can make it simple. If we want as a city to make it simple, there's a very clear ways that we can do it. We just need to outline those steps in our own. I I think the easiest way, from what I was told, is to make things clear through changing some of the council rules. And that's what on one of those sides it talks about. And council rules are governed by the council. And if people were just curious what it would take, I did get permission from my two subcommittee people to perhaps put in draft form what would have to be changed in our own council rules. And then we could run it by the ethics lawyer and then by our attorney and see what kind of what kind of things float there. And I think it would be nice if the council agreed to do that, even if we only did this maybe once a year. Or maybe we agreed to try it when it feels like it's right. We would have this little thing to click and say, we now know what it takes for all seven of us or four of us to appear without making any waves in the legal world. And then.
I don't know what's being proposed. So my, I I agree that if you're sitting here and you want to change this format in a way that is different than your council rules, you have the absolute authority to change your council rules. If you're talking about taking the council out of council chambers and meeting routinely and regularly, I I just am concerned because there are public meetings requirements. And I can tell you that whether or not O G E C says in a vacuum, absolutely no problem. That doesn't mean you're not going to get a grievance filed, that you're going to take up staff time responding to a grievance, that that gets sent to O G E C, that there's something we didn't anticipate, O G E C sees and spontaneously opens their own investigation, which is exactly what happened here. I I just, I am a by the book kind of gal. And I'm also concerned about three of you appearing in public somewhere that isn't a public meeting, because the second that three of you have information that is then one shares with a a fourth. I'm just so nervous about it that to me, it seems way better for individual counselors to go out to, you know, known public organizations, be the sole recipient of that conversation. Never talk about it with anybody outside of public meeting until you're here and then you have this proper forum to share. Here's what I heard. And you can each go through that. I'm not saying you can't do it, Counselor Sotomayor, but I'm very concerned. This is not the atmosphere where it is willy nilly, you know, just because we want to hear from the public, we should try to facilitate that. We are in a different world right now.
Advice from council. Counsel Hank?
I like to trust the experts. And, you know, I, as frustrating as it is to hear the no's or the nays or the ways that we can't do it, I I appreciate and I even thanked Mindy on Friday for protecting us, you know, just giving us the facts to keep us out of trouble, because I don't want to learn the hard way. So I would like to explore the options. Don't take this as me saying I'm not on board. I'm on board, but I want to be on board the right way, because I don't want to learn the hard way. So I want to trust the experts.
And we feel responsible when a complaint is filed and we don't have the best defenses for you. It's, it is an uncomfortable position for staff, which is why I play it very conservatively. And I'm just totally upfront, I will not change that, but that doesn't mean you guys can't do something else.
Counsel Irvin?
So both continue to explore ways to satisfy all these concerns and do it in a not rushed way. I think we were clearly rushed this last one. Things I'm hearing are more engagement. Community wants it. Community wants it. They appreciated the effort. They want that to continue. So we'll have to explore how, how we can do that. For your guardrails. I do think we should also kind of blaze the trail in terms of, what I would think of as a legitimate town hall, recognize kind of whether it be once a year or, or whenever, that we would have that in our tool bags, tool bags. And I think that's the effort that we are, that's the subcommittee wanting to engage in this. What would we have to do to take into consideration all the concerns that have been raised through this last process? Minimizing staff time, protecting staff time, not only in the setup of the, the meetings, but in the blowback potentially thereof. But also making sure that we are engaging with more of the public, that residents know that we are, we covet their, you know, opinions and would go to them. We didn't want to stay here. We want to go out and demonstrate that. All within the boundaries, all within the city limits, all within these other things. So with, with the blessing of the council, we'd like to pursue and present what options we think there are and have been critiqued. And maybe we can find a, something that works in the future, whether we use it or not frequently.
Mr. Sarwin?
Along those same lines, a couple of, a couple of things I'd suggest. First of all, the budget process that's laid out in state law is the minimum that we need to do to pass our budget. If council was interested in having a, some sort of open forum, whether you call it an open house or whatever you want to call it, every year is part of our budget process. We can certainly put that into our budget calendar next year, that there is a step between, you know, budget committee approval. We have, you know, some sort of public process before we bring it to the council. If that's something the council is interested in doing in future budget processes, we can certainly do that. The second thing I'd suggest is, you know, if you as individuals go to Rotary, Lions, Kiwanis, I'm going to miss somebody, Chamber of Commerce, go to their meetings and talk to the folks who are there. Go to them, go to the, go to the, you know, if there's homeowners associations for some of the larger developments, go to their meetings individually and then come back to this. And as part of council concerns, say, hey, I met with this homeowners association. They really want us to fix this road. Maybe that should be a priority. And bring that information and bring that information back to the whole group. You know, the other thing that I've seen cities do is to schedule office hours. And then just on a rotating basis, you know, every Thursday afternoon, I'm just making this up as I go along. A council member has two hours of office hours. We set them, we set you up down in the conference room. And if you have citizens come in and talk to you, and, you know, you can arrange ahead of time to have come people meet you, or you can just make sure that, you know, we notify folks that you're available. And again, that can then be shared with the whole group at the next council meeting. That way we're reaching out to as many different people as we can. But at the same time, we're, you know, not having the city attorney lose sleep over.
Yeah. All right. Counsel Irvin?
Your concerns of council. Like to, I guess, get the temperature or get the, whether or not get consensus of council. But to try to close the loop on the council's knowledge as it relates to development and in Cottage Grove. So I, I mentioned this at a prior meeting, but I don't feel like I understand well or that we collectively do what comes into the planning department as a request. Be building or construction that gets a no, that gets an, our code doesn't accommodate, so they never get out. There's no permit issue. There's no nothing. It's just, can't do that here. It's not feasible, but that would be a variance or whatever the case may be. And we're talking about staff reports, what comes back to us. And it seems like that might be a great place for it to include, what did people want to do in Cottage Grove that we told them no? Want to allow that or not? And at least have that discussion so that there's awareness on our side. So that's something, if there's support for that, I would love to say we'd, we'd like to, we'd like to have that information. Nice to be able to be aware of it. Another item that I, speaking of, we can, nothing is set in stone. I'd like to revisit the backyard camping ordinance. I don't know if that's on the schedule, but like to, edit, see, see how effective it is, where, where maybe it's breaking down. And let's see if that can be adjusted to be more beneficial to the community as well as the street parking. For, I've heard comments on, from a few different angles now on that. I'd like to revisit that. Part of the information that I, I think would be necessary was, you know, what's the enforcement frequency? What effect has it been? What kind of demand is it on, on staff time? Is it serving its intended purpose? So those are the, the three things that if there's support from the council that would, I'd love to see. And certainly, you know, within the scheduling of staff. Staff.
Do we have a consensus on that? Yes. Anyone else? Concerns of council? Counselor Sotomayor?
At the end of the last town hall, we had a little suggestion comment box. And on the box, it said, if you write your name on this, we'll make sure and get an answer back to you. And I thought it appropriate that the council decide since none of these, no one put their name on it, so technically we don't have to answer them. But perhaps, you know, in the idea of transparency or clarity or something, if there's any of the council that would like to respond to any of these questions, it, it might be, might help out with our communication.
Specifically, but how do you propose we answer those questions?
Just if I'm, just the idea, if this, do we want to answer them? Do you want the subcommittee to come back with answers? Do you, does anybody here want to tackle one of these? I don't know. Or do we want to say they didn't follow the rules, so let's file these away?
No, these, these are big questions to answer just off the cuff. How, how can, talk about our plan to reduce the budget by 500,000 a year? What's our next step in reducing low income housing? There's a lot to these questions. So it's, it's not something we can just answer off the cuff. So I don't think that could be handled tonight.
So we wouldn't, should it be handled in the future?
Absolutely, but I think this is a work session and something that we have to, it's not necessarily a council meeting. This is going to be something that we're going to have to bring our ideas and present even in concerns of council in the future.
Okay.
Counselor Mary Day?
I would be willing to give a sort of a cuff blow to housing. We have our project Sparrow that is geared towards affordable homes. And in that, in that tract, there is a, I think it's about five acres that is reserved for truly affordable homes that would be in, put in through, uh, using our LERTD. So that is one thing that we are doing that's already in progress. So that might be some information for the person that asks this question.
But it was presented at the town hall.
Yeah.
So I think they're looking for something in addition.
Yeah, and that's a big question for all of, all of the, the country, in Oregon especially.
Counsel Irvin?
I'd like to tackle. Says, can you all talk about how you as a council plan to reduce the budget by 500,000 this coming year as directed by your budget committee? Thank you. I think the short answer to that is it's going to be as a council on a decision basis that the city manager is going to bring is something that's tasked. And we're going to work through it through this whole budget year. It's not one idea thing that's going to happen. And so I, I mean, I appreciate the question in that we all have to address that. We all have to prepare ourselves to, to work through that process. But it will be a process that we work through that involves ideas of raising revenue or just, I think. So to, to, to address a point that was brought up at the town hall meeting. But I guess that one would be stay tuned.
Counselor Sotomayor?
Um, yeah, and I'm glad you started that. I'd like to add an important word in here that I think I heard from more than one of the counselors and more than one member of the budget committee is when you say reduce the budget, I would like to see the word gap after the word budget. And you talked about using different ways to solve this, like raising other forms of revenue and stuff. We don't necessarily need to see the whole number come down. We need to see somehow we came up with funds, the gap get reduced. And so whether that takes that form or whatever, I, I think that that is definitely a work in progress and look forward to those conversations.
Report from the city manager.
Well, good evening, your honor, and members of the city council. Look, first and foremost, the splash pad is open. We have made many, many small children, and yes, some of their parents who are running through it as well, very happy. And I really want to single out Faye Stewart and his foundation for all the work that they did to provide not just this, but the entire Bohemia Park. Look, guys, I've worked in a, in a number of different cities. This is probably the best park I have ever seen in a city this size or for that matter, a city two or three times this size. So well done, guys. And we're glad that that splash pad is open. Thank you. Uh, I just want to follow up on a couple of items from the budget committee. First off, one of the things that was requested was with the Waterworth Software, we had the consultants present to us how it affects our utility rates and how we're using it to predict our, our future rates and also make sure that we've got enough money coming in so that we'll be able to pay our bills and also protect, increase our system as we go forward. So Faye and I met this afternoon with the folks from Waterwork Software. We'll be putting together what we're calling a dashboard, which will essentially be the information that you got at the budget committee for the utilities as well as the general fund. Now, the nice thing about working with the software is that we can update it on a regular basis. So what we're hoping is, is that we do our quarterly and annual budget updates that we'll be able to integrate the information that we get from the software. We'll get it up on our website. It's going to be a snapshot in time, but it'll give a chance for everybody to take a look at it. The second thing I wanted to talk about was a motion that was passed by the budget committee, and I think was mentioned earlier this evening. And I'm just going to read a portion of it. The city manager to bring to the first council meeting of the 2025, 2026 fiscal year, an agenda item to discuss how to reduce the 16% gap in the budget between expenditures and revenue. This is something I wholeheartedly endorse. Clear back, when I interviewed for this position, I talked with the city council about the fact that you really need to take a hard look at how we're funding general fund expenses, especially police and the library. If we're going to have long-term stability, we're really going to need to take a look at how we fund and how we right-size those programs. So I, I'm glad that the, the budget committee passed this. It's a practical matter. We'll bring it to you at your regular first council meeting in July. But I want to be clear that city staff is already taking a look at this, had good conversations with Eric, had good conversations with some of the management team. So, you know, I said, we'll bring you a motion. But understand that we're already working to bring back recommendations on how to reduce that gap. So that concludes my report, your honor.
Thank you, Mr. Sarwin. We part from the city attorney.
You might think you've heard enough from me, but you've had a little more. Good evening. And first off, it sounds like I need to try out that splash pad. So I might be scampering on over there in less than 10 minutes. We're going to get this done by nine. Second, Oregon Government Ethics Commission, I wasn't kidding when I said, please, please be careful. They came out with a decision in September of 2024 and they reiterated the premise that public officials who eat food and beverage at city events where it is not part of their official compensation in a city adopted policy are violating the ethics laws. Yes, it is true. So after that, there is a very long and complicated analysis behind it. It, it is a, it's this long of an opinion from government. So we're not going to summarize it tonight. But I, I just wanted you to know that that type of acceptance of refreshments could potentially be a but-for violation, which means you are receiving a benefit because of your service, because of your position with the city as a public official, or if it's a gift. So you go to a potluck and somebody, and you receive food or beverage from somebody that has an administrative or legislative interest in your decisions. So contractors in town, your city manager, anything like that, those are ethical violations. There is an exception to both of those rules, which is if it's available to anyone. So if it is a community-wide potluck and you're participating, that's not a violation of either the but-for or the gift rule. And after this came out, I had a long conversation last week with the executive director of O G E C, Susan Myers, and one of their investigators, Josh Sullivan. They are actually responding to my inquiries with a follow-up written opinion to try to help cities figure out how to move forward in a way that doesn't violate the ethics laws. So this is just the, you know, the first step in, actually a question they did not want to answer. The mayor of Beaverton submitted a question that they were, the city attorney said, don't ask it. You're not going to like the answer. O G E C said, I wish you hadn't asked that. You're not going to like the answer. And then LOC followed up with trying to really pin them down on what is and isn't acceptable. We're, we're not to a solution yet, but we're getting there. So I just wanted to, um, I guess, use this as an opportunity to write, remind you of those sticky ethics obligations and how O G E C, if it's a violation, they will find it a violation. They're not going to say, but just because we've been doing this forever doesn't mean it's not a violation. And lastly, the, um, the June 23rd council meeting, Mark Wolf of my office will be handling that. I think we're, you're speaking to his area of expertise, employment and labor law. And, um, so I am also unavailable, but it worked out that he was already scheduled to attend that. So I'm thinking July 14th is when we will probably bring back a next iteration of the chronic nuisance ordinance, if that works for staff. Okay. That concludes my report.
So no more potlucks for us? All right. Darn. All right. So with that, this meeting is adjourned.